Good evening and welcome. Today is October 7th, 2025. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the Bosch Freilich Meeting Room at Mandan City Hall. Mr. Newbauer, would you please take the roll?
Commissioners Braun.
Here.
Roar.
Here.
Schoberg.
Here.
Heinchan.
Here.
Mayor Freilich.
Here. And at this time, we will have Officer Josh Sher and Cooper lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the reward which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh. And we will move to announcements and we're going to switch this up a little. We have Marlo Anderson from the Musis, the Music Hall of Fame, okay? And he is going to recap the induction that we had last two weekends ago. Marlo?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Mandan City staff. First, I just want to thank you all for allowing us to make Mandan home for the North Dakota, thank you, Music Hall of Fame. It's an honor to be here and we've worked hard to make sure that Mandan stays the home of the Music Hall of Fame. And we have a lot of great things that are coming to our town because of this. This was just, just kind of the start. And I guess there are some photos in here that I'm going to share with you. If I do this properly. I feel like these are not the right photos.
Are you tech challenged, Marlo?
Um, you know, I'm only called the guru of geek, but don't, here we go. Usually I have, that's usually when I'm fixing things. All right, so I'm on here showing the photo. So we had four inductees. How many, how many people in the city of Mandan will it take to figure this out?
Well, we got an engineer and an IT person.
It's not as blue. Oh, there we go. There we go. All right. Wonderful, wonderful. So we had four inductees. We had the Blenders. Many of you probably know the Blenders with the really, really popular with Christmas music. And let's see here. Again, I'm tech challenged. Of course, we had our own Chuck Suki. And this is Chuck here with his Hall of Fame honor. If you missed it, it was quite the event. Having Richard Torrance and Chuck Suki inducted at the same time this year allowed them to play together at the end of the evening. That's Richard Torrance accepting his right there. And then we also had Skitch Henderson and Susan, many of you know Susan from Bismarck with the Bellamy Hughes, accepted that in his honor. So those are the four inductees. And I thought the crawl, we had a music crawl that went on in our city. We basically turned Mandan into Nashville for a day. So the Hall of Fame brought all these musicians into town. It was quite wonderful. And, you know, and if you might, you might not like rap, you know, but we do have rappers from the state, Wiz Khalifa is from, from North Dakota. And someday, he's going to get inducted into the Hall of Fame. And that could be a very interesting day for Mandan. But it's, it's a lot of fun. And we really appreciate all of you for what you have done for us. So we look forward to that relationship moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marlo. It was a beautiful day. It was 84 degrees. And it was a good vibe, as one of the bar owners said to me. You kept walking from bar to bar and there was music coming out of each bar. And it was just a really nice afternoon. So thank you. On to Fire Department Rescue Boat Appreciation. Chief Bits.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. We'd like to take a few moments just to let everybody know that our Fire Department boat has arrived and we're starting to work through the process of getting it in service. Pulling up some pictures as well. Here a second ago. There we go. So as a Fire Department, we looked at our response and where we're strong and where we're weak. And one of the areas we identified, some area that we can, some, make some improvements to was our water capabilities. Again, not to replace the existing water rescue resources that are out there, but to fill a time gap, fill a gap in time to better serve our citizens. And we don't think of Mandan as a water community. I mean, like a, like a large lake or oceanfront, but we do have approximately eight miles of water that border us along the Missouri River and another eight miles on the Hart River. And then in addition to that, we've got about another approximately eight miles of interior bay or shoreline such as Lakewood or Marina Bay or Borden Harbor. So there's been a lot of growth as it relates to water property. And with that growth comes risk. So as a way to mitigate that risk, we sought out some grant funding. We, this total project was about $80,000. And a little, under half was paid for through a game and fish grant, North Dakota Game and Fish Department grant. And the remaining funds were solicited from local businesses. So we got the Mandan Eagles, Dakota Community Bank, BNI Coal, BNC Bank, Western Excavation, Midco Foundation, Bobcat, Farmers Union Insurance, Mandan Baseball Club, excuse me, Mandan Baseball Club, Firefighters Charitable Foundation, and Mandan Cares were some of our larger partners. So I just have a few pictures. I'll click through here. We will be doing a formal gathering with the people that did contribute to the boat to get a picture with them because we're super grateful for this opportunity. So the boat itself is a rigid hull. It's aluminum hull and then has inflatable inner tube around the outside. It's a very robust, heavy duty boat, very agile, maneuverable, made for tight quarters or open water. The boat's equipped with FLIR, Forward Looking Infrared Technology, so we can use it to navigate at night, has search lights. It's also equipped with just a standard depth finder, but as well as side scanning sonar. So if somebody does go subsurface, we can start to do some preliminary searching while the dive team is in route. There's a few more pictures of it out on the water. So, so again, we're just super grateful. More to come. It'll be on display at our Fire Department Open House, which is the next point of conversation, which is next Tuesday evening, the 14th, at 7:00 PM at Fire Station 1. Every year, we invite the public to come out, meet the firefighters. There'll be other emergency responders there. Encourage everybody to come out. There'll be fire truck rides that evening. There'll be a parade that starts at 6:30 PM up at Mandan Rural Fire Department up by Cloverdale and goes down 6th Avenue and then goes down Main Street and proceeds to Station 1. And then that's when the activities start. There'll be hot dogs and other activities there. So we encourage everybody to come out. It's exciting time of year. And Administrator Newbauer has guaranteed good weather. So we're excited about that.
Thank you, Chief. I would think it should be stated again that we have 24 miles of shoreline in Mandan. So the boat was, was very much needed. Thank you.
Mayor Chief Bits, regarding the use of the boat, that'd be more of a reactive call for response use, correct?
That's correct. Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Roar, the boat will be assigned to Station 2 out in Lakewood where we do have staffing 24/7, but it will be a reaction response at this point.
It's not when they go out and, for like the Sheriff's Department where they go out patrol, anything. This is strictly to deal with particular types of emergency situations, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to Cooper. Chief Ziegler?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I would like to just announce that this upcoming Friday is the official date of Cooper's retirement. Cooper's been with us for right around six years and he's been through three handlers. And he's protected the citizens of Mandan very, very well. So we want to send him off into his retirement in a, a good Mandan way. And he will be living with Sergeant Share and be adopted into his family permanently. So I appreciate the work that Cooper's done for the last six years and the bad guys that he's caught and stuff like that. He's done a very good job. And I can't say enough about Sergeant Share and the job he's done with Cooper being the third handler. And I also want to give a special thanks to Bob Cooper who bought Cooper. So Cooper's named after Bob. And Bob has been invited to be there and hopefully he'll be there and he can come up and say a few words. So I don't know, Josh, you want to say anything?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Cooper, you want to say anything?
I just wondered, can we get a shot of Cooper? Or the cameras don't go that angle? Maybe he needs to...
Go to the center there? Yeah, if he walks up by you guys.
Yeah.
Now he's visible.
Did you say sita? So he doesn't speak English?
All his commands are Dutch.
Do dogs get gray hair upon retirement?
Uh, yeah, he's a fallen handler.
So then Cooper's replacement is scheduled for 2027, I believe. Will be in the 2027 budget cycle. So we'll be looking to find out which officer will be the next canine handler because Sergeant Share is busy with investigations and probably doesn't have the, the time or patience to train another dog. And so that search will start immediately. So we've got a couple of young officers that are interested, so.
Okay. Well, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Cooper. Thank you, Sergeant.
This Friday at...
What's that?
This Friday at...
Okay. I feel like we should...
The retirement's Friday at Dyke Shore Park, 2 o'clock.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you. Now we will move on to item number five under announcements, Business Pitch Challenge. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, just to remind folks that the Business Pitch Challenge will be held on October 15th at Central Station, starting at, the doors will open at 5:00 with presentations starting at 5:30. The four finalists are Soda Drop by Kimberly and Darren Hintz. They call it Dirty Soda Company and a Food Service Operation. The other one, Pronto Chore by Von Dynert and Michael Storick and Arnie Strebe, a technology platform connecting small businesses and homeowners with the local pronto pros to complete seasonal residential and commercial chores. Learning Lot Childcare by Tawny and Cameron Cozy, a childcare center, and Dakota Soda by Samantha Roth, a soda shop with craft sodas, specialty drinks, snacks, and branded merchandise. So again, October 15th at the Central Station. Bar and Events at 111 Collins Avenue, doors open at 5:00 and contestant presentations start at 5:30 PM. So again, similar to a kind of a Shark Tank setup and winners are awarded not only monetary prizes, but other donations that have been provided by area businesses. So we look forward to seeing folks there. And I think we have roughly 40 people that are registered to attend right now. If you have the chance, we would appreciate registering on the cityofmandan.com's website. And that gives us a good handle on what to prepare for, what to prepare for and how many to prepare for, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Newbauer. Now we'll move to item number six, Construction Update. Jerick?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just before we do the update, I did want to bring attention to something that Carla and Ashley completed this morning. We have, we had last year done this teal pumpkin project and we are going to do it again this year. And what this is, is kind of a repository, a resource for people around the community to register their house as a teal pumpkin house, which kind of identifies, identify themselves as a house where they'd be giving away non, or allergy friendly treats this Halloween, usually non-food treats, like stickers, temporary tattoos, glow sticks, stuff like that. We have it up on our website right now at cityofmandan.com/tealpumpkin. And I think that Ashley posted it on social media today too. So I just wanted to draw attention to that in the beginning of October for, the end of October. Moving on though. For project updates today, I have updates for Memorial Highway, Water Treatment Plant Phase 2, Collins Avenue Reservoir, 2024 Reconstruction Project, and our 2025 Reconstruction Project. For Memorial Highway, I think at our last update meeting, I said that there would be three underground crews working and they have brought in a fourth underground crew. And they are active with water main installation, sanitary sewer installation, water services, and storm sewer on the southwest side of the corridor. New lift station control panels are going to be delivered soon. And that would be for the lift station at 40th. And then paving, mainline paving is through 43rd Avenue right now. And right now, people may have noticed that 40th Avenue is closed and it will be for approximately three weeks past its closure date, which I believe was October 1st. So that's what to expect. As far as moving forward, we're still targeting that November 23rd winter shutdown. And that would include a, a driving surface, that surface that is not the current temporary wavy asphalt service, surface. Just wanted to reiterate that. It, it should be, it should be drivable and access to, to the businesses along Memorial Highway should be more than acceptable come winter. Any questions related to Memorial Highway? No. All right, moving on. Water Treatment Plant Phase 3 Optimization. Right now, they are working on the lime silo. They tied rebar and placed concrete for the silo foundation walls and ran electrical conduit for the lime silo. Not as exciting, but still good work, preparing for the winter work. They're going to continue working on the railroad spur and roofing this fall and prep for the indoor work, which includes lime blowout valves, filters, 5, 6, and 7, and lime slakers. Questions on that one? All right. Collins Avenue Reservoir, the recent work mainly included wire winding around of layers 1 through 4 and encasement of those wires in shotcrete. This is a process that I do have a video of here. And it is exactly what it sounds like. This unit up here is going around the, the reservoir with wire that is in tension. And they're following that with a crew that is spraying shotcrete to encase that wire and protect it. This keeps the concrete in a constant state of compression and ultimately makes the whole reservoir stronger, have a longer life capacity. My update for the winter shutdown stuff, the new reservoir should be online in late November. And then a lot of the other work will bleed into 2026, which includes retaining wallwork, demolition of existing tank, and reservoir painting. Questions on that one?
Jerick, what did you call that? Shotcrete?
Shot. Shotcrete. Yeah.
Okay. I was asked by gentlemen what, what that was being sprayed on there. So I can tell them that now. Thank you.
There we go. 2024 Street reconstruction project, this took place in the Low Strider area as well as over by Culvers. This project is substantially complete right now. We completed a walkthrough on the 19th of September and the punch list was delivered to the contractor. And right now, they are active working on those punch list items. And then we will follow up in the spring with a, with a chip seal. But that one is substantially complete at this point. Any questions or concerns with that one?
Define punch list.
Uh, the punch list included a lot of, like, identified where sprinklers had been broken or where no more landscaping needed to be completed. Maybe there are certain instances where sidewalk panels were cracked prematurely, or cracked when you wouldn't expect them to be cracked at this point in their life. There was an instance where asphalt in an intersection was graded so that water would flow outside of the valley gutter where we want it inside the valley gutter. So just kind of little items like that to, to correct it and just catch as many things as we can. I know that Public Works went through and, and exercised some curb stops to identify ones that were bent or inoperable. So a lot of just that, the small items to, to make sure it's 100% complete.
Thank you.
Yeah. 2025 Reconstruction. This is in the Monty Drive area, just west of Lewis and Clark Elementary. All of the water main is installed and online right now. The contractor is active installing curb and gutter and prepping, prepping the roads for paving. Paving is to start at the end of this week. The contractor is still aiming to complete pavement work before winter. And then the chip seal and unfinished items would be wrapped up in the spring. Any questions on that one? No. That's what I have for you unless I can do anything else.
Anything else for Jerick? If not, thank you, Jerick.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number seven, the Mandan Art Alley unveiling and ribbon cutting. Mr. Newbauer?
Mayor Freilich and Commissioners, on October 22nd, at 5:15, there will be, if you want to call it a ribbon cutting, but the unveiling, the artists are currently working very hard to finish the murals in the art alley. Just to the, let's see, to the south of Vickies and Central Station and to the north of Big Stick and also Butcher Block area. So we would ask the traveling public, if there, if you see scaffolding and folks working there, try to avoid that alley while they finish up that work. But there's some pretty cool stuff going on down there. And like I said, the official ribbon cutting will be on October 22nd at 5:15.
Very good. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number eight, which is the Extra Mile Day, and that is November 1st of 2025. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. So November 1st, 2025 is Extra Mile Date. And now we will move on to the public comment. Are there any public, okay. No public comments. We'll move on to approval of agenda. Commissioners?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to minutes. Consider approval of the following Mandan Board of City Commissioners meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 16th Board of City Commission meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan, a second by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Consider approval of the September 29th, 2025 Board of City Commission Special Meeting Minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no public hearings, no bids. We will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items you would like removed, Commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, as is.
I move to approve the agenda as stated. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brown, a second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. We have no old business, so we will move on to new business. Item number one. And I will turn it over to Dennis. Commissioner Roar at this time?
Yes, at this point in time, I'll be finishing up my fourth term as City Commissioner. That will be completed in June 30th of next year. And I'm currently the Vice President for the committee here. And so I think this would be a good time to appoint another person here to be, get prepared to serve in the opposition. You know, it's good to have somebody somewhat seasoned. And like I said, in June, mine will be up. And pending any capable person that decides to run, will give me a chance to bow out. And I would encourage people out there to look for and seek or themselves, volunteer to come in and check and be a City Commissioner. It's very important. There are so many things going on in the city that are so important, so many decisions to be made and so much to, to deal with that. We need, you know, some good people, citizens who are willing to share time. And it's not, it's not a difficult job. In fact, anybody interested, anyone know more about it, they can get ahold of me. I'll meet them, buy them coffee. I got a lot of files I can give them too if they want that. But anyway, it's, it's incumbent upon our community to make sure that we get people in there to serve. And I would encourage again, somebody to do that. So with that being said, I would make a motion to appoint Ryan Hinshaw as the Vice President for the board here.
Second.
Okay, point of order. I think we have to accept...
Oh, yes. We have to.
Commissioner Roar.
Okay, as that being said, I would offer my resignation as a vice chair at this point in time.
Okay.
I move to accept Dennis's resignation.
Okay, second. A motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoberg to accept Commissioner Roar's resignation as Vice Chair of the Board. City Commissioners? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes.
Then I'll go into my secondary motion to propose that we appoint Ryan Hinshaw as the Vice President for the board. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Roar, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion?
Well, Mayor, I guess I'd like to add Dennis, thank you. And to this entire board for the confidence in me to, to potentially serve in this role. It's been my honor to, to serve alongside of you and Dennis. You've been very kind in my year, 13, 14 months here that I've been here. And your knowledge has been very supportive and helpful, I should say. And I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
You've got to sign him to a fourth term, by the way.
Sounds good.
No, just kidding.
So just before we take the roll call, how long have you been involved in the city of Mandan?
I've been involved in the city of Mandan for 21 years plus, be 16. Long time.
Yes. And you're not going anywhere. So you're, we're just switching roles a little here. So...
My wife and I did buy a cemetery plot here, so I guess that's relevant to something.
Well, roll call. Make sure you include Dennis.
With that, Commissioner Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Okay. We will move on to item number two under new business, Long Term Financial Plan Adoption. Greg. Justin?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm in front of you this evening for your consideration of the approval of the five-year long-term financial plan for the city's long-term financial planning policy. As you know, we, we spent January through May working on this. And this approval would just be for, to adopt it for planning purposes and for a guide to use going forward in the, in the budgeting process. It does not bind the, the Commissioner or the city to more than, you know, the 2026 budgeting period, but it does act as that guide and, and format for the, for staff to use to put that together. There is a proposed motion in the packet and I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Justin?
I move to approve the five-year-long financial plan for planning purposes to be used as a guide for the annual budgeting process.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Rohr. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number three, consider entering into an engineering service agreement with Apex Engineering for Services related to the master lift station interim improvement project.
Mayor and Commissioners, on August 19th, we released a request for proposals for the master lift station interim improvements project. We received four, or proposals from four firms, and through a competitive process, Apex was selected as the, the most qualified and the preferred firm by Public Works Communications, Finance, and Engineering Staff. We then began negotiation, contract negotiations and scoping with Apex, and we have a scope and fee here for your consideration tonight. This would include the design, the preliminary design, the main design, and the construction administration for our master lift station project. This is about $392,000. It is estimated to be, you know, somewhere between 2.2 million, 2.5 million dollars. So this is in that 20%, 25% range of overall construction project. So we think it's a very reasonable price, and we are happy to recommend Apex Engineering as our selected consultant, and we're recommending to enter into the engineering service agreement as presented. I can try and answer any questions. Mike Berg from Apex is also here to answer questions if you need.
Jerick, I think it's important for the people at home and those who, for whatever reason, cannot access the, the packet for tonight's meeting, could you give us a brief description of those attachments? Because I believe this is the first time in our community's recent history, and Administrator Newbauer, if that's an incorrect statement, go ahead and, and cross my name off the list or put it on the list. But I think it's very important for the public to know that the intricacies of what Jerick just said are included in this item attachment.
Yes, absolutely. So I, I think that, yeah, for everybody's knowledge, the, the agreement and the scoping documents really showcase what the project is, and I think it's a really good document for people to, who are interested to learn about the project and if they have opinions on it, you know, be informed and give us informed opinions, so.
Jerick, can you describe what a master lift station is?
So.
And also the location of it?
Absolutely. Let me pull up a map here. Our master lift station is basically just a big lift station, and a lift station is something that takes, collects sanitary sewer that is gravity, gravity flowing to a low location and then pumps it back up so that it can flow into a, or gravity flow again. So it's, it's kind of just lifting, lifting sewage up so that it can flow again. This particular lift station collects, I think, about 75% of the city's sewage and pumps it directly into the wastewater treatment plant. I did pull, I pull up its location here on the map. I'll zoom out a little bit here. Here's Family Fair Supermarket. It's just to the east of that, kind of tucked away in this oxbow. It is right here, and it pumps along the levee with two 16-inch asbestos cement pipes all the way down, I think it's two miles, to our wastewater treatment plant down here. The proposed project would address deficiencies in the master lift station itself, as well as the first approximately 1,500 feet of those asbestos cement pipes. Public Works has had to respond to breaks in those pipes several times over the last couple of years, and those are some of Public Works' least favorite breaks to respond to, so.
Those breaks were, temperature outside was what, 20 below?
I'd have to, very cold weather, yep. And then some of the nuances, or one of the delightful characteristics of asbestos cement pipe is that when you do work around it, it tends to get affected and brittle and, you know, doing work around it, breaks can propagate more breaks, which can propagate more breaks. So it's, it's kind of a, a snowball effect sometimes.
So the age of this lift station and the age of the piping is what?
I don't know off the top of my head. Mike, do you know?
The lift station was mid-'70s, the pipe was 67.
Pipe was 66, and the lift station was mid-'70s.
So are we replacing the piping with the cement piping, or are we going to some other material?
We would be looking to replace it with a different material, but what the exact solution right now, I think, is something that will determine through the design process with the consultant.
And basically, the pump that pumps, what did you say, 75% of our community's sewage is worn out?
Mike, maybe. You could speak on that a little bit more than me.
Yeah. The, yeah, the, the pumps themselves are, a couple of the volutes are original. The internals have been replaced over time. The iron pumps get corroded from the hydrogen sulfide in the wastewater. And so part of the improvements for the master lift station are short-term improvements with the intent to get it through a period of time until funding is available to, to upgrade the complete station.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Any other questions for Jerick? If not, Commissioners?
I move to enter into an engineering service agreement with Apex Engineering.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number four, consider entering into an engineering service agreement with Moore Engineering to service services related to the Mandan proper northwest and street rehabilitation 2026-3A. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, let me see what I got here. Similar to the master lift station, we requested proposals for the Mandan proper and street rehabilitation 3A project. And then for your consideration tonight, we have task orders with more engineering related to those two projects. Moore Engineering was the preferred, preferred consultant after a competitive process that included proposals from seven firms for the Mandan proper project and six firms for the 3A project. I will go and outline those project areas for everybody's benefit. I have zoomed in on the 3A project area, which is everything generally west of 30th Avenue Northwest, east of 47th Avenue Northwest, and north of Old Red Trail. It's the area immediately around Red Trail Elementary School. This area was kind of a, was a project that had been halfway addressed a few years back, and then that, the project's scope had been protested down. And this spring, the Public Works had to respond to a bunch of failing roads up in this area. And we felt that it was necessary to move this up the priority list and get this, get this ready for a 2026 construction. Once again, I said, Moore Engineering ended up being the selected firm through the competitive process, and we are recommending entering into the task order as presented for that. The other project in this item is our Mandan proper Phase 1 project. It's generally located south of Division, north of 6th Street Northwest, east of 6th Avenue Northwest, and west of 4th Avenue Northwest, this little rectangular area that I'm highlighting here. This project includes total recon, street reconstruction, including water main replacement, curb and gutter, drainage issues, storm sewer replacement, and sanitary sewer lining, brick manhole replacement, all the, all the above. Man, Moore Engineering was the selected consultant through the competitive process, and I guess boiled down to our recommendation tonight, which would be to approve task orders nine and 10 with more engineering related to the preliminary engineering for both of these projects. Try and answer any questions. I stumbled through that a little bit.
So Jerick, the, the Red Trail Elementary area that would not include, would be negative on the deep dive to replace water, stormwater, and sewer. This is basically road surface at grade-type stuff?
Mayor, Commissioner Schoberg, that is correct. Yeah, this, what we are anticipating, we still have yet to scope this completely. We will take a look at the utilities to make sure that we're not making roadway improvements above utilities that we have to replace in five years, but we're not expecting to have to make utility improvements in this area.
Mayor Jerick, one of the main sources of the problems up there was the underground water or the amount of moisture below that was, which caused those roads to disintegrate quite often. Does this product look at re, somehow by rain tiles, whatever, to remove that? Is this part of the, the reconstruction is to ensure that this problem of water under there and moisture in there does not persist?
Mayor, Commissioner Rohr, yeah, we would have a geotechnical portion of this project where we would be able to identify where the water table is at and what the soil, what the soil conditions are, how thick the pavement section is, and what we might do to address those issues. Might be a more robust pavement section, honestly, but we would look at drainage tiles if that seemed necessary. Yeah, a lot of that would, would be identified during this preliminary engineering process.
Because if you don't want this, this is going to reoccur again, and then the people up there are paying quite a bit more, and so the initial problem may be a little painful, but it's going to have to be taken care of to avoid problems and large expenditures in the future.
Absolutely. We want to, we want to do it once, and we want to scope it, we want to thread the needle on not making it too expensive, but doing the, just the correct scope that will last the lifetime of the pavement, of the expected lifetime of the pavement.
Okay, thank you. Do you know when those streets were installed, Jerick?
Originally?
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head. I know that some areas are older than others. For example, you can see up on the screen here, there's a lot of mature vegetation in this area. This would have been, this would predate most of the other areas. I don't know off the top of my head. I think that, I think it's got a few different eras of street reconstruction up here.
Okay. Any other questions for Jerick? Thank you, Jerick. Commissioners?
I move to approve task order nine and 10 with more engineering.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners Rohr.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Item number five, consideration of requests for proposals for architectural services for fire station number three. Chief Bits.
Mayor, Commissioners, I stand before you to formally request permission to solicit architectural proposals for fire station number three. This is a critical initiative aimed at addressing our city's growth and rising emergency call volume and response challenges we face in the northwest part of Mandan. Continued development and annexation in northwest Mandan have further extended our travel times and our emergency units, for our emergency units, underscoring the need for our third fire station to ensure a timely and effective response. The recent acceptance and, or award and acceptance of the SAFER grant has supported this initiative as we work through our long-term staffing plan, so the next step to move fire station number three forward is to actually go out to request for proposals from architectural and engineering firms to help us better understand the, the ins and outs of the placement, the exact placement of that fire station. We believe we have a solid piece of property that we own that'll work well, but more importantly, help us understand the design and layout of that specific station, options that might be included, or the cost to include some options on that building. So this evening is not a commitment to fire station three, but it is the next step to solicit proposals from architects so we can fully understand what the costs and project schedule would look like to build fire station number three. So we would anticipate, if approved, we would advertise in the Mandan news on October 17th, October 24th, as well as October 31st, and then we would receive those proposals until 5:00 PM on Monday, November 10th. At this time, I must stand for any questions you might have.
Chief Bits, the location that the city currently owns, which would be targeted for the new station, that's on high ground. Is that correct?
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Schoberg, that is correct. It is on high grounds, and right now, it's, I pulled it up on the map here, one site that we have identified is on the corner of Hillside Road and Old Red Trail. It would be co-located with, there's an underground water reservoir there, and then grass bins that are there right now. So we'd, we'd have to work through the co-location of those facilities, but that's one site that we've identified, yes.
Would there be a potential to include at a secondary emergency operations center up there?
Mayor, Commissioners, Commissioner Schoberg, that is one thing that we do have, or excuse me, we have anticipated, working through the design process to figure out what that cost might be. It would be one of few facilities that would be up on the high ground, not down in the floodplain, such as this facility that we're in today. So that is an option that we're considering, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Bits? If not?
I move to authorize the fire department to issue a request for proposals for architectural and engineering services related to fire station number three.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Heinchan, second by Commissioner Schoberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Motion passes. On to item number six, consider allowing HDR to perform a second opinion on the wastewater treatment plant master plan. Jerick?
Mayor and Commissioners, I think it was a couple months ago that we presented our wastewater treatment plant master plan to the commission. Since that process, since we completed that process, we've been discussing a lot internally and with you all about what the next step should be, and I think everybody was most comfortable with procuring a second opinion. Since the wastewater treatment plant is so prominent in our long-term financial planning and, and we want to make sure that, you know, we've identified the right process selection, and it's impactful in so many ways, we felt that it was important to get a second opinion on this. The engineering department met with three engineering firms that would, were capable of performing the second opinion, and of these three, we felt that HDR offered kind of the right balance between timeline and, and approach, and we are recommending entering into an agreement with HDR to perform this, perform this service for us. Their, their, their fee was around $32,000, and just for context, the original master planning effort was total about $68,000. So we would be about $100,000 in total on the, on the kind of master planning effort for this, if we move forward to this. I can try and answer any questions related to this. Otherwise, we have representation from HDR that would also be able to answer questions.
Any questions? Jerick, the, this is another, as far as I know, kind of a first for public review, where under the attachments to this particular packet item, there are three rather extensive attachments that the public might want to review by visiting the City of Mandan website. And as far as I know, again, in effort to make things more clear and open educationally, I recommend our citizens to scope out these documents because it was an eye-opener for And I want to commend our city staff that worked to attach these documents to this particular agenda item. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Jerick? Hearing none. What are your wishes?
I move to sign a contract with HDR to perform a second opinion on wastewater treatment plant master plan. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Schoberg, a second by Commissioner Heinchan. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I'd just like to say, you know, we've, we've had a lot of engineering things come through in the last couple of meetings, and we've had quite a few engineering firms bid on, locally bid on our projects. And I think it's refreshing that we have options in our community, and there's interest in doing work with us. And so, you know, I think it's a testament to what we, what your staff goes through in vetting this and stepping through what the process is, but it's refreshing that we have, we have multiple options for projects, and people want to work with us. So I just wanted to add that, too, Mayor. Thank you.
I would concur with Commissioner Heinchan in that regard. Engineering, planning are two of my portfolios, and we've had the pleasure of working with the engineering firms that were involved in this decision here now. And I was very, very impressed with them all during these numerous meetings that occurred prior to it reaching our city commission. They've been very receptive to suggestions. Some of mine were kind of off the wall, if you will, but they didn't laugh at me. And have all been very supportive, very patient. And I've got a very, very solid, sound perspective on the integrity and the dignity of these engineering groups. I have heard some commentary from the coffee-clutch groups that think that we're favoring this one or that one. And as far as I can tell at this point in time, that's hot air. It's sheer windbaggery and not to be listened to.
And with that, no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioners. Heinchan.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. Thank you, Jerick. We will now move on to resolutions and ordinances. Item number one, consider the second and final consideration of ordinance number 1473, making the annual appropriations for expenditures or expenses of the City of Mandan, North Dakota for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026, and making the annual tax levy for the year 2025. Greg?
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. This is the final step for the city to adopt the 2026 budget. Leading up to the meeting tonight, prior to, or on the day of the public hearing at the last meeting, the city did receive a couple of questions via email. Those questions have been responded to, to the requister. We have not received any follow-up questions since the public hearing. The only change in the budget ordinance for this evening is a reduction of the property tax levy for the Mandan Public Library. We have adjusted that property tax levy down by $10,450 from the preliminary budget. That was presented back in August, and that is due to the revenue share for the library's operating budget between the county and the city. The revenue share in proportion is based on population according to the 2006 Memorandum of Understanding between the county and the city. So as a result of Morton County setting their funding level, consequently, the city had to reduce theirs to keep the revenue for the operating budget between the county and the city in proportion to the population estimate. So with that, there are no other changes in the budget, and I am willing to stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions for Greg?
Greg, in reading the packet, I got, I'm not a finance guy, so I get easily confused when it comes to dollars and decimal points. So one of those paragraphs, I had to scratch my head because it alluded to the fact that the city cap total property tax levy is 3%, right, as our legislators passed.
Correct.
But the actual?
The actual, because of the adjustment by lowering the property tax levy for the library, effective for the final reading of this ordinance, that increase will now be 2.2%.
Which is obviously below the 3.
It is below the 3%.
Then, I think it was in the next, next sentence, and this is what I tripped over my own jump rope, I guess, so to speak, was the increase for existing residential property tax averaged 3.5%. So that's, I saw the bus tires rolling over my head on that one. So could you explain the difference in the verbiage there?
President Freilich, Commissioner Schoberg, I will do my very best to explain that. Let's say that you have a residential property that was valued, let's say, for the 2025 budget at $300,000. The average residential increase for the city just on market value was 3.5. So it takes that $300,000 house, you add 3.5%. Now, keep in mind, 3.5% is not indicative of every residential property. That's just the average market increase. So the adjusted true and full value for the 2026 budget for that $300,000 house now becomes $310,500. That equates into a taxable valuation increase. However, because of the property tax cap, the city is limited to how much it can levy in property taxes. It's not taking the full increase, obviously. As a result, the mill levy rate decreases for the city for the 2026 budget. So taking that lower mill levy rate times the new taxable valuation with the market value increase creates a $7.45 city tax increase for the 2026 budget.
For a $300,000 home?
That went up 3.5% according to Board of Equalization. I think there's the perception that if your house goes up 7% in value, that your taxes will go up 7% in value, then that's not the case.
Well, thank you for explanation.
I hope that helped.
Well, I don't get any of it, but I'm sure some people out in the world are a lot more financially astute than I would fully understand. Thanks for your explanation.
Sure. You're welcome.
Any more questions for Greg? I know we're not asking questions, but this, tonight wraps up 10 months of planning, so maybe we're a bit exhausted with our questions, right?
It's been a long year.
It has been. Kind of a departure from previous years, correct?
It has. There's been a lot more long-term planning in this budget process, which is good for the city going forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you to you and Justin. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the second and final consideration of ordinance number 1473, making the annual appropriations for expenditures or expenses of the City of Mandan, North Dakota for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2026, and ending December 31, 2026, and making the annual tax levy for the year 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Heinchan. Second. Commissioner Roar?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Roar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Commissioners. Commissioners Braun.
Yes.
Roar.
Yes.
Schoberg.
Yes.
Heinchan.
Yes.
Mayor Freilich.
Yes. And with that, again, thank you, Greg and Justin, Mr. Newbauer, and all the department heads. That was a heavy lift starting January 5th, January 6th with meetings. And that was every other Tuesday when we didn't have a commission meeting into the end of April. So thank you to all the commissioners for attending. And with that, I would also like to thank Commissioner Roar for his service as vice chairman of the board this past year. I really appreciate it, and I appreciate his guidance that he's given me during that time. Future meeting dates for the Board of City Commissioners are October 21, 2025 at 5:30 PM, November 4, 2025 at 5:30 PM, and November 18, the day after my birthday, if you, anybody wanted to write that down, at 5:30 PM. And with that, be kind to your neighbor, and it's onward and upward, Mandan, and we are adjourned.